Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is September 27, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Stanky requested to be excused, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Costin?
Here.
Cummings?
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Six present, one absent, and one excused.
Yeah, Councilmember Cummings should be, she's here now, so she was just running a minute or so behind. Item four is business, four A, citizens' input time. Citizens' input is a maximum of 60 minutes. The set for input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We'll utilize the podium to my left, your right.
All right, good morning, Mayor, Council, David Jimenez, President, IUPAT Local 2301. I'm here to speak in opposition to privatizing of all or some of the golf course. Before I start, I just want to point something out that will be in a slideshow later today, shows that the RFP was sent to the union, it absolutely was, and that there was no response. If we respond and make a bid, I can't stand before you speaking on behalf of the employees. So that's why there was no response on that. It seems like year after year, we're standing before you, talking about this very topic. Do we keep the golf course in-house, or do we send it out and privatize it? Last time, we were here last year, it was council put forward that they would not move forward with privatizing any or all of the golf course, and that they would put money into it. They would look at the new sprinkler systems that had to be put in, they would look at clubhouse retrofits. It's a beautiful piece of property that can, we can have so many events there, there could be weddings and so forth. Since that time, what's been done? The cart paths, cart paths project is complete, it looks great out there for anyone who's played out there. We spent $822,000 in brand-new golf carts. We spent $200,000 in other equipment. So progress is being made out there. But what still needs to be done, as I stated, the sprinkler system, clubhouse, the last two items haven't been addressed through the budget. So what are the outcomes? It's my understanding that Coral Oaks today is on course to have record profits. Record profits, but we're still looking at morale being at an all-time low, because employees there feel as though no matter how good of a job they do, it's going to be looked to be outsourced. So I stand here before you asking, with record profits, why are we looking to bring in a private company to take some of the profits away from our taxpayers? This isn't just something that is affecting Coral Oaks employees. This is something now that's affecting all employees, because they see this coming year and year, and they're wondering, when are we next? Parks employees, utilities employees, all, DSD, when are we next? So I stand before you asking, please keep the golf course in-house and continue to let our employees do the fantastic job that they are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. There's any council discussion on citizens' input. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 4B, discussions. B1 is state and federal legislative agenda. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, our lobbyists from Becker &amp; Pollykoff, as well as Ballard, I think available by phone, and Maureen, the Assistant to the City Manager, is going to present this item. What we're going to be looking for is a general consensus, so that we could build a legislative platform for this upcoming session, and then we'll come back before you all too actually approve that platform.
Good morning.
Morning. Maureen Vice, Assistant to the City Manager. Before we talk about the 2024 legislative priorities, I wanted to take a look back at the 2023 state legislative session. And I know that our state lobbyists will go over this a little bit more in detail, but what I really wanted to point out here on this slide is, through the appropriations process, the city received $17 million, which is greater than any other legislative session in the past. That's thanks in part to our advocacy team and the individuals that you'll hear from in a few minutes, as well as our local delegation and support from all of you and the work that all of you did as well. Before you is the advocacy team that the City Manager spoke about. We have Amanda Wood, she works on the federal side for us, Nick Matthews, who works on the state side, and then our state executive lobbyist, Dane Eagle from Ballard Partners. Some of the 2024 legislative priorities that we are proposing to City Council, you have seen before, they are often on our legislative priority list year over year, but you'll see in the list before you, some of the new items specifically related to Senate Bill 102, Senate Bill 250, those are new, those are a result of last year's legislative session. Home rules, short-term rentals, and maintaining local control, those are topics that you see time and time again, and many of these other topics you've seen before. Another newer one has to do with irrigation water regulation that we spoke about briefly with some of you, and expediting the building permit process in relation to notice of commencements. We're proposing that the regulations that apply to municipalities be removed. If a county has a notice of commencement on file, remove the requirement that requires the City of Cape Coral to do a second verification on the notice of commencements. This would help speed up the building permit process. Again, we have workforce and affordable housing on the list, and infrastructure investment and transportation investment as well. And then, similar to last year, we have hurricane recovery and relief reimbursement on our list of suggested priorities. Some of the projects that staff is proposing for, as part of the grant or appropriation process, and you know, where we're looking to get some sort of financial support from, are the projects listed before you today. Since the agenda went out, we've added the Oasis Sports Complex, so that's new to the list that you don't have in your packets. But these are some of the projects. The yacht club and pier rebuild is the first item. We have the Northeast Reservoir Transmission Main, the Emergency Operations Center expansion. We received money for all three of those projects in last year's session, that often gives us a better chance of getting financial support again this year. We have the Septic to Sewer Project, the UEP, JC Park redevelopment, Oasis Sports Complex, and then Pile and Road Widening, you know, working with FDOT on accelerating the widening of that project. As the City Manager mentioned, the next steps in formally adopting our legislative priorities would be through resolution that will come before you, and we would continue to work with our state and federal representatives for financial support. And keep in mind, the financial support isn't just in the form of appropriations, they work with us year-round on grants. Before we open up discussion with all of you, I wanted to introduce our federal lobbyist, Amanda Wood, and she'll be followed by our state lobbyist, and they'll talk to you, give you a little bit of a look forward on what to expect in this upcoming session, and perhaps an update on what's going on now.
Thank you. Do I use this to advance it? Just use this, okay. Okay. Put it in the slideshow. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me today. It was nice to escape DC just for a little while, things are a little hectic there. I'm going to bring you up to date on the very latest, though please know that it's changing by the minute. So the Senate has passed all 12 of their appropriations bills, the House has only passed 10. I think you all know the federal fiscal year runs out this Sunday. So we are way behind schedule, which has become sort of par for the course. We very often, you know, run the government on continuing resolutions past September 30th, and eventually come to some agreement on spending packages. There's a big gulf between the House and the Senate, not only on funding issues, but on policy issues, and between the parties as well. So what I can tell you right now is, at the moment, there is not a real plan to keep the government open past this Sunday. As of this morning, I understand there is a consensus package on the Senate side that they're going to try to bring up in the next 24 hours. There's another package on the House side. I can't tell you that either of those packages that would pass the Senate or House would pass the current chamber. It would pass both chambers in its current form. So some sort of points of differences would be on, you know, spending levels in general, border security, you know, fiscal constraints, support for the Ukrainian war, disaster spending. So we've got a lot of moving pieces. And just to give you a sense of how this would impact you all and your appropriations requests, which I'll talk about, is that this would just, yes, shut down the federal government, but then it would not erase the pending funding that is in there for local priorities. It would just delay action on it. So we'll talk a little bit more about appropriations in a minute, but just know that in addition to all of this appropriations work, that is very, very top of mind to all of us, certainly, there are some other major issues we need to deal with this fall. So we're going to be dealing with inflation and supply chain issues, immigration, we've gotten an expiring FAA reauthorization bill, we've got a farm bill that is up for renewal, we've got things like, you know, our latest extension of the National Flood Insurance Program expires on September 30th as well, will need to be folded into this, some sort of extension package. And then there's a lot of focus on artificial intelligence. So we've got a lot of really pressing major federal issues to deal with during this session, in addition to making sure that sort of the most basic requirements are met and the federal government is kept open. Okay, so in the House Appropriations Interior Bill, there's $1 million right now for your Septic to Sewer conversion and utilities extension. This builds off the water funding that we were able to get last year through the full appropriations process, the reclaimed water transition main for $1 million. And we're really only in year three of Congress returning to the process of congressionally-directed spending. So we had about 10 years where there were no earmarks at all, and that process has returned. Our senators in Florida do not request earmarks, however, they don't stand in the way of House members putting those in, and then they don't, they wouldn't work to try to remove those during the conference process. So we've worked very closely with Representative Donald's office, he has a real interest in funding specifically water projects, so we've worked collaboratively with his staff and your staff to make sure we're putting forward projects that he can get really excited about. He's only able to request last year 10 projects, this year 15 projects, so I'm really thrilled that we've been able to get funding in both years. One of the other really main focuses of our work has been on recovery issues, whether working with you all on the logistics, and working with HUD and the county on the allocation of funding for long-term recovery, and then some policy issues that we've highlighted to the Senate offices and Representative Donald's office. So things like the need for additional FEMA site inspectors, streamlining processes, that's a theme really here, you know, whether it's SBA or coordination between federal highways and FDOT. So just know that we're continuing to work on those issues, and that the entire delegation has been not only receptive, but encouraging of input about Cape Coral's experience with FEMA, so that they can make improvements moving forward. So in addition to funding priorities, we'll be developing those new ones, we're a little behind the state process over in, up in DC. We're really just finishing up, hopefully soon, this year's federal appropriations process. In addition to funding, we're always working on a number of policy issues for you all. Obviously, those hurricane recovery and preparedness issues, a lot of FEMA issues, whether it is risk rating 2.0 implementation, getting a permanent solution to the National Flood Insurance Program, affordable housing, making sure you all have robust and flexible funding through the Community Development Block Grant, making sure you have access to all sorts of municipal financing tools, and innovative ones and expanded ones, and then natural resources issues, including harmful algal blooms, and we've had a lot of success on the funding side with law enforcement and fire safety technology as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the federal side.
Thank you. Any questions for Amanda? Councilmember Hayden?
Amanda, how likely is that $1 million?
Well, what I can tell you is that last year, every single project that was included in the House Appropriations Bill was included in the final package that passed into law. So my expectation is that will be included in the final funding package. You know, that's what precedent shows us, but it's never a sure thing until it is signed into law by the president.
Well, and I'm really happy that, I think when Congressman Donald was first elected, he was against earmarks, and has happily changed his viewpoint on that, so.
Right, we agree.
Hopefully, that'll go through. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. I'm going to pass it on to Nick now.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Nick Matthews with the Becker Firm. Thank you, Amanda, for a great recap of kind of what's going on at the federal level. You know, what's interesting is, I noticed that there, between the Senate and the House, about $115 million or billion, that is a difference between those, that is literally almost to the dollar the exact size of the Florida budget. So think about that, the difference between, you know, at a federal level, their budget negotiation is literally would fund the entire state of Florida. I thought that was kind of interesting. Anyway, we're here, obviously, because the 2024 session, it's crazy to think, is going to be here before we know it, and meetings are already taking place, committee weeks are firing up, so we wanted to come and do kind of an annual, here's kind of what the next couple of months look like for us all. But before we move forward, sometimes we want to look back and kind of get a little context of kind of how things have played out. As Maureen had mentioned, we were thrilled to bring home what we're pretty confident is a record number in last year's legislative appropriation process. These are some incredible projects, really timely, and I think it is important that the council mayor, you guys understand and really know, that you making the trip to Tallahassee, being in those offices, showing that you've got skin in the game, really, really makes a huge difference, and it makes it hard on the folks up there to look us over when it comes budget time, because they know you really care and you made the trek to Tallahassee. Some of you even drove, I believe. So, looking forward, a couple of dates to be aware of, November 17th is when bills that need to be first submitted and drafted. We haven't done a ton of legislation on behalf of the city in recent years, but that is something to be aware of if there is something that needs to be fixed, maybe in previous legislation. Those bills need to be submitted in November, the first day of session is January 9th. Another important date that your lobby team really focuses on, February 27th, and that's the last day that regularly scheduled committee meetings are calendared in the legislature. And that's important, because if some of this, some of the really bad legislation that we fight every year, we are just watching the clock, trying to run out the clock on this stuff, and if it's got a committee reference or two around February 27th, we usually can count on that bill being dead for session typically, and then obviously March 8th will be the last day of regular session. As we gear up for session, like you and your staff, to just be aware that the committee weeks start in October, they're on us, and then there are seven committee weeks through October through December. Another important date to be aware of, October 30th, the Lee County delegation is meeting. I believe it is the 16th you need to have a request into the delegation to get on their agenda to be heard, and I think, Mayor, in previous years, you've attended that, or the City Manager has. So obviously, another opportunity to get in front of our delegation and talk about some of the pressing issues in the cities. I would certainly encourage to get in and make sure you submit to them by the 16th deadline to be a part of that meeting. So, and some other really important deadlines for us to be aware of, both the Senate and the House have their appropriation request forums available, which is, those are noxious forums that, you know, we can't stand them, your staff has to deal with them too, but they are available, we can start working on them. The most pressing deadline is that November 14th deadline, to have those submitted into the House of Representatives. The House's process is pretty strict, they got to be in by that deadline, and then we have to have a signed attestation form. Typically, Mayor, you've delegated the City Manager in years past to sign those forms, but it's just a little piece of the process that we need to be mindful of, because we could be deemed out of order if we meet, if we don't meet those deadlines. But ideally, we would be well ahead of those, so we can work out any kinks, because sometimes you do submit forms and there's errors in the forms, and we want to, we want to be in, we don't want to be running up against that deadline. So I think it's also important to understand kind of the fiscal landscape. Last year was a record budget for the state, record appropriation process for the city. Some of this is pulled directly from the Office of Economic and Demographic Research, it's their long-range financial outlook. The story here is, the state still looks strong, but it is looking less strong over time. Kind of maybe you can sum it up, I can sum it up in those bottom three fiscal year projections, and those are surpluses identified by year, $7 billion to $5 billion to $2.7. So they are anticipating some sort of decline in kind of fiscal health of the state in those years. So just something to be mindful, I think we expect, you know, we want to be ambitious and we want to be, you know, aggressive with our appropriations requests, but understanding the fiscal landscape over the next couple of years is certainly an important piece of that. But, so I think this year will still be a strong year for the appropriation process. I still think, you know, we want to pursue all the items that are in the proposal, the agenda that you guys will be approving. I think water projects are still strong, I think some of those things, we still have a good, a good chance. And as Maureen said, getting something through that process in a previous year tells a story that, at that time, there was nothing so fundamentally flawed with it that it was pulled out of the process, or it was vetoed. So those are, going back to the well, it can be kind of a good thing on some of these appropriation items, so. I'll certainly, I think, as I turn it over to Dane from the Ballard Partners, I want to relay to the council, we have a really great working relationship with the Ballard Partners, we are a great team, and we're thrilled to be working together. And I would love to, Dane, if you're available, I'd like to turn it over to you for kind of some of your thoughts on what session looks like and some of the next steps.
Thank you, Nick, and I trust everyone can hear me okay. Mayor, City Council, City Staff Administration, thanks for the opportunity. Sorry I can't be with you in person, was already planning to have travels when this was scheduled, but I appreciate the opportunity to be with you virtually, and want to second what Nick shared in our working relationship between the two firms, and being able to divide and conquer, collaborate where needed, and I think that success showed in last year. And thank you for, Nick, for also kind of setting expectations, we certainly want to build on that success, but also the, I think, the surrounding nature of what was presented last year helped bring that success forward. A great budget year, a great fiscal outlook, and then coming off the heels of Hurricane Ian, while certainly a tragedy for our community, it allowed us to advocate on behalf of the city. One of the big allocations was the $9 million for the EOC. Frankly, we were all told that was going to be vetoed, and through the advocacy collaboration with the city and your advocacy teams, we were able to share the story of why the city's EOC is needed, why that sets apart from other, perhaps municipal EOCs across the state, and we were successful in getting that done, and that certainly added a good chunk to getting to that $17 million mark. So high expectations have been set, we understand, and we're certainly shooting for the stars again, but we had a great year last year, and we will build on that. Looking forward, we haven't seen a lot yet come out as far as big news or big ticket items for the 2024 session, but expect that to come relatively soon. Last year, a big priority for both chambers and the governor was affordable housing, of course, the Senate President and a member of our delegation put forward the Live Local Act, and I know there were some parts of that that gave some cities some concern. We were successful in an 11th-hour push, and the Senate President was very gracious in allowing us to do a floor amendment to make some of that a little bit more palatable for our city, and that was wonderful to see. I don't, what we're hearing is that we will not see much as far as a Live Local Act again this coming year. That was a big push to get that done, that's great news, and the fact that we don't see much more happening, but also I know a lot of cities are looking to maybe roll some pieces back. I don't see, I don't see a big appetite to do that unless there are real glitches. And she has said, if there is really something that was unforeseen, that is causing real problem in our cities, let's hear about it and let's discuss it, but if it's just coming back to rediscover things that have happened, likely we won't see that. But that is something we can continue to look at and see if there are real glitches that need to be fixed. Healthcare is one of the big items that is kind of coming out as a priority of the House, the Senate, and the governor, so we may see some issues there. If Live Local was the issue of last session, Live Healthy might become the issue of this session. Insurance, of course, continues to be a big topic, as we've seen in the special council meeting earlier this morning, so expect some items to be discussed there. Typically, and historically in election years, we would see some of the maybe more controversial issues take a backseat to some more pragmatic and real bipartisan concerns taking the front stage. But I think we've seen with this governor and bold leadership, with the House and the Senate, and Republicans having the majority, I don't think that we'll see that again this time moving forward. I think we'll see again some very bold measures, and I think we'll see a united front. The House and the Senate, the leadership there supports the governor, and whereas we've seen in maybe some past years, House leading on some issues, Senate leading on some issues, and the governor leading on other issues, I think we might see a more unified rollout of some of the priorities between the House and the Senate and the governor in the next coming weeks. And while we had one committee week already under our belt, that was simply the House meeting, the Senate did not meet, we had the designation of the incoming speaker, following speaker runner, which will be Danny Perez out of Miami, so a lot of that committee week was focused on that delegation and the ceremony surrounding that. There is an upcoming meeting in October, the House won't be present, it will be the Senate, and then the second week, the second meeting in October, we'll see the House and Senate meeting together. So while we've had kind of the slow rollout of committee weeks, expect that to start moving a lot more quickly, and expect some more details as far as the major items or discussion points of the legislature and the governor to be rolled out coming quite soon. That's about as much as I have for an outlook, but look forward to discussion, and thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you. I'll open up for council to have any discussion or anything I want to say to Nick and Dane both. You know, I appreciate all your hard work last year and collaborating together. It was definitely a team effort from, for everyone, including our staff, council, and your firms, and I think that's the main reason that we saw the success that we saw in the appropriations. So just want to thank you two for your hard work, for working together, and we look forward to doing that again, not only this year, but the years ahead, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think, Council, go ahead, Councilmember Long.
Yeah, please, either Nick or Dane, I know last, at the end of last session, we had two different bills sneak up on us, by way of 250 and 120, and so I know Dane just kind of prefaced it a little bit, that we're not, you know, that there would be not a ton of interest in revisiting old discussions, but it's my understanding that we didn't, because of the timing that we discovered these issues, that we didn't have those discussions. Is that something that we're considering, looking into?
Am I still on here? Councilmember Long, absolutely, I know Dane has actually engaged in some of those conversations already, it's one of the issues that we've talked about, I know he spoke with, I think, Senator Martin and Representative Gielavardo about the, I think that has to do with the land use or the permitting, you couldn't do anything more restrictive than following the hurricane, that provision. There's certainly, we're looking at it, we're going to fill it out and see if there's an opportunity to fix that, or undo it, or find some measure that allows Cape Coral to do what it needs to do to kind of protect the integrity of your city while the legislator, that wasn't targeted at Cape Coral, from what I understand.
Right.
So there might be a way to thread that needle to where the folks who really have a, that were not collateral damage, and then pursuing exactly what they want, but that's absolutely on top of our list.
Yeah, on a surface level, I mean, it just seems like we just got caught inadvertently in a wide net, and so I'm just curious.
I think so.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
And just so you know, Councilmember Long, I know I've already had discussions with Senator Martin and Senator Roach, I'm sorry, Representative Roach and Representative Gielavardo, and they understand, you know, the ripple effect that really, how we got caught up as far as those two bills, and they are at least have an appetite to have a discussion that maybe, you know, where we can amend those bills, maybe that don't affect us. One could be vacant property, you know, versus if it's an improved lot already, so we've already had those discussions, and along with the City Manager, so.
Awesome, appreciate you all staying up on that, thank you.
And I guess, Mr. City Manager, what you're looking for today is a consensus to move forward with the appropriations that you listed, and, you know, do you, you just need to get a majority of council's consensus to approve that?
Yeah, and not only the appropriations, if there's anything that's on the list of priorities that you think shouldn't be, or if there's something that's not on there... priorities that you think shouldn't be, or if there's something that's not on there that you conversely think should be, we'd like to know that as well.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Cosin, I guess we'll start with you. We'll just go down the, go down the line here.
Thumbs up.
I'm good.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to item 4B2 then, is the presentation FDOT State Road 78 Pine Island Road Vision Plan. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to present to the, the community and the council as a whole, I believe. CTEC, those of you who serve on CTEC have had an opportunity to go through this process and understand, you know, where we're at, but this is our opportunity to present the output of the, the vision plan for State Road 78 and, and how we intend on trying to advance that roadway through the city in the future. Ultimately, there are steps we need to take. Funding the second half of the PDNE study this year is, is the, the next step in that process. And then ultimately, we'll have to start lobbying for, you know, funds to get in the long-range plan and hopefully more, hopefully a sooner plan if, if we can work with the state to identify funds. So I'll turn it over for a presentation on that, on the vision plan.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is Persia Sanbrano, Interior and Poly Works Director. I think the city manager stole my thunder. I was going to give you a historical perspective, but of how we ended up here. And I think the, the message is that we're partnering with FDOT to accelerate the six-laning of Pine Island Road. Where about 18 months ago, the city manager's office contacted the FDOT secretary with concerns about the widening of Pine Island Road. So FDOT came back to us and they say, well, there is a very antiquated PDNE planning, development, and environmental study performed, and that's why we have the cross-section that we have right now, which is open swells on both sides, no sidewalks, and it's what is, they call a suburban cross-section. So FDOT, in order to accelerate the process, they committed to perform what is called a vision plan, which is what we're going to present today. And this is the, the base for the next phase, which is the plant development and environmental, the PDNE study. So with that, I will defer to Laura Dodd. She's our principal transportation planner and she managed the project from the city side.
Good morning. Thank you. I, I guess, thank you, City Manager and Persis for stealing my thunder now. So what you have before you, I won't belabor the issue. This is the Pine Island Corridor Vision Plan. This is a priority goal within your strategic initiative. This project as background kicked off around spring of last year, and it identifies some existing deficiencies within the system. And it really broke those down into five principal main objectives for the vision plan to address. Those main objectives are safety, congestion, multimodal connectivity, transit access, and character. What this vision plan does, again to reiterate, is it serves as the framework to move forward with the PDNE in the future. So that being said, we do have Vitor Seguri with FDOT here to provide an overview of the presentation. I'm aware many of you have already seen this several times. Vitor, I do want to thank you on behalf of the city as FDOT has been a great steward with the city in partnership on this plan. So that being said, Vitor.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. So my name is Vitor Seguri, Community Planner FDOT District 1, and also the PM for this project. So the brief overview of the existing conditions, I think most people already know what's going on in the corridor, but just to give you a perspective of the length of the corridors from US 41 all the way to Barnstorm Road. So it's a very lengthy corridor. It goes through different types of sections. So we identify strategies that would fit the whole corridor, and there are guiding principles on how to, how to achieve those. You can see we identify some of the major attractors and trip generators where the most of the action is along the corridor, mostly located, located around the center and towards 41 and Barnstorm Road, but we know the corridor is growing and there's new development coming most every year. So we also accounted for that, but this is what exists in today. Here's just the analysis of what's out there in terms of sidewalk gaps, what type of street lighting we have. We know that there's only a segment with lighting. There are several lights at intersections, not all intersections are signalized, and there are some other intersections where we're going to look at different treatments. But this is what is existing today, and there's a small segment at Del Prado, which is six lanes already. So we identify what's out there today and see what needs to be filled in, in the gaps, and what needs to be enhanced as we move forward. Here is just a snapshot of the volumes. As we mentioned, most of the action is towards the center of the corridor. That's where you're going to see the highest volumes of traffic, daily traffic, and also have the level of service, A to F. So F is the least favorable, where you might have, start to have issues. A is almost a free flow. And it's not like academic grade letter that is attributed to the level of service. So F, it's not, it doesn't mean it's not working at all. It just means you're going to have more problems, more congestion, and it becomes a little bit more difficult to traverse. And that's the part in red, the high, that's highlighted in red. Here are just some of the numbers that you can see. So from Del Prado towards Pine Island, you have 56,000, which is level of service F, and that's where we want to focus our attention. And that should be a priority for the corridor to kind of solve that problem first and then start moving outwards. We also collected some crash history. It's from 2015 to 2019, and the reason for is we validate all the crashes that come into us, so we don't have all the validated traffic data after 2019. But we do have a significant number of rear end and angle crashes. A lot of the rear end crashes are due to speed on the corridor, and also the angle typically is turn movement and weaving in traffic. So those are the predominant types of crashes we've seen, and we're going to try to address it through different strategies. And you can also see the number of fatalities in the corridor. So for every fatal and severe injury crash, we have more than one person affected. And because safety is number one priority for our district and for the state, we like to think of those fatalities not only in the statistics, but the person, the family, the community that it's impacting. So in our strategies, we're, you're going to see a heavy focus on, on safety. Through the, our effort, we collected public input through different methods. We had two public workshops done at different times of the year. One was before, just before the hurricane, and one, we, we found it was necessary to do one after to make sure we're still capturing the needs of the community. And we also had an online survey that we did left it open to a very extensive time to give people opportunity to recover and really put their thoughts into the questions and answers. And we also presented along the way to the CTEC meetings to make sure we're getting feedback from City Council and others, other leaders in the community. And from those inputs, we got several key takeaways or several messages that we were hearing over and over again. Number one is in vehicle traffic, there's definitely a desire to add lanes, to make it six lanes. As we can see, the city is already moving towards that PDNE to widen to six lanes. There is a desire to add some signals in different locations, and it, this is just what we heard from the, from the public. This is not what we're recommending just yet. Coordinating signal timing, we heard that sometimes you can be waiting at a light where there's really nothing going on, and that could be improved. And also the timing during congestion time, where you can improve traffic flow, improve several intersections where we see a lot of the problems, especially turning movements, and enhance safety throughout the corridor for all modes. Bicyclists and pedestrians, there is a desire for better and more improved facilities, buffered bike lanes and continuous sidewalks. We saw in the existing conditions map where we don't have a continuous sidewalk throughout Pine Island Road, and also expand that to connect into all the connecting roads. And also there's no bicycle facility at this time, or buffered bike lanes. Safety, speed management, we talked about some of the most predominant crashes. So if we imply, do some speed management treatments, we, we may be able to reduce some of those crashes and the severity of the crashes. Add street lighting, we saw that only a small segment had street lighting, so that would be another important factor. We also heard improved pedestrian safety, so that covers the other parts as well. So having a proper facility for pedestrians, proper crossing, better intersections, those all are going to help. And also the cycling facility, bicycle facilities, whether it's a buffered bike lane or a different facility, having a designated facility for cyclists will, would definitely improve safety. We also heard the desire for streetscaping, and we have been coordinating with the city already on how that can be incorporated into the plans, but making a city a desirable place to be, enhancing the character of Cape Coral and Pine Island, and it's not just another arterial throughout the city, so people will identify it with the corridor. And also we have some land use recommendations in terms of what you want to achieve in terms of safety, improved traffic flow. So improving the green spaces, improving walkability where you can, and also in the land use side, having mixed use residential, commercial, restaurants in closer proximity so you enhance those opportunities for transit, opportunities for walking trips and bicycle trips as well. So the vision, as Laura was saying, is based on this core principles of enhancing safety for all, reducing congestion, improving multimodal connectivity, expanding transit access, and enriching corridor character. So we took all those input categories and we transformed those into our, our core principles guiding the vision. Here are some of the more higher-level vision for the entire corridor. At DOT, we have a context classification to determine that will help us guide the design, and it's based on your land use. So we have a, what we call a C3C, which is a suburban context. It's a suburban arterial, suburban design. And right now, the speed limits are ranging from 50 to 55, depending where you are. And the proposed target speed, which is the desired speed, it doesn't mean it will be changed overnight, but that's what we like to achieve is a 45 mile an hour for the entirety of the corridor. There are certain segments, we identify different types of improvements. For the intersections, we haven't specified which is the most appropriate intersection improvement that would come out in the PDNE, because the corridor is going to be widened. We then want to put something in there for the four-lane configuration that then will be, have to be redone once the six-laning happens. So we just identify the most significant spots where we know we need to provide some improvements. We also added items that are, for FDOT, there are standard high-visibility crosswalks, some of the other ADA components, and looking at bike lanes, how we can fit and how better incorporate bike lanes into the corridor. And you can see the high priority being that segment between Santa Barbara all the way to Del Prado Boulevard. So there is a menu of strategies. These are some of the opportunities we identify for the corridor. It doesn't mean all of those strategies are going to all be implemented at the same time, but these are, these are the options the city will have to implement in terms of safety. We want to improve visibility that come with lighting, maybe enhance crosswalks. We want to introduce Refugee Island. Because it's going to be a six-lane roadway, people will take longer to cross, so they might need a refugee or place to stop before they complete the crossing if they don't have enough time, especially if you have turning movements. We have reduced corner radii that will help with speeds, because cars will have, and trucks will have to slow down to make the turns where, where we see the need for it. We also have protected intersections, those will have designated places where pedestrians and cyclists can cross safely. And we also have roundabouts as a, as a suggestion. On the six-lane facility, it would be very difficult to implement roundabout, so that was just on the list for suggestions. We also have items in the congestion, so adding travel lanes will help with capacity, so you're going to expand capacity. We're going to optimize signal timing, so it improves flow. We're going to have to work with access management, all the driveways and openings, access points throughout the corridor, make sure there's a space appropriately and correctly, so we don't have a lot of inbound and outbound movements into the corridor. Again, multimodal, make sure they have proper access to destinations. We talk about the buffered bike lanes, sidewalks, multi-use path, those are all in, in line of what we heard, and those are all options that you're going to have. And then transit, enhanced transit, transit services, on-demand bus stop amenities. There are many amenities throughout the corridor that might need a bench or might need some shelter, so we identify some of those. And also the gateway landscaping, way finding to build that character. So here is how target speed might look like. This is just a, a high-level concept of the six-lane, what you might expect. And setting the target speed of 45 does allow us to expand what we can do in the roadway in terms of speed management. So one of the ideas is to have lanes at 10 feet and 11 feet. It will give space for more landscaping and also open up space for different bicycle and pedestrian amenities. We identify high-crash locations where we're going to be developing countermeasures, and mostly around Del Prado and US 41 add to be our priority locations. Enhance safety, just to give you a visual what those items might look like with street lighting, Refugee Island, and all those items that I've talked about, those are just going to give you an idea of what they mean. And the recess crossings, those are just meant to, to match where the sidewalk is, where the driveway is supposed to end, so that there's a continuation of the sidewalk and improve visibility for those who are crossing. To reduce congestion, obviously we have adding a lane, so making it to a six-lane, but there are other opportunities that we already talked about, like optimizing signal timing, identifying new signal locations, and evaluate the access management along the corridor. Here's just one example of an alternative for improvement at an intersection. And the main point of this design is to eliminate one of the signal phases. So instead of having a phase for a turn movement, it would be just for true movement, and if you need to make a turn, you do have an opportunity to go straight and then make a, make that turn. So improving multimodal connectivity. Again, there's multiple ways you can go about it, depending how you want to develop, and that will be fleshed out in the PDNE. So the buffered bike lane is your typical on-the-road bike lane separated by three feet. So the buffered bike lane is your typical on-the-road bike lane separated by a three-feet buffer, and it's just paint. You can use a multi-use path, which is separated from the roadway. It gives the riders and pedestrians the most level of comfort, and it's the safest. You have the sidewalk, which for pedestrian is the best one, but for cyclists, they prefer not to be on the sidewalk, especially the most confident ones. Providing connections between the sidewalk and the roadway into the facilities. A lot of times, it's just the grass or a swale and the parking lot, so it's very difficult for pedestrians to access. So they're not going to be able to, or they're discouraged from walking or biking if they don't have a good access point. And also improve signalized mid-block crossings. Because there are larger blocks, and we don't, we want to discourage people from crossing at any point in the roadway. So if we create different opportunities for them to cross, there are more control, it will create a safer environment for them to do so. Improve transit access. I know the city already has an on-demand transit service, so enhancing that service, improving some of the bus stops and transit stops with bus pullouts, shelters, and make it accessible transit stops. So to enrich the corridor character, we talked about landscaping, gateways, wayfinding, just create a unique vibe for the city where people, when they're traversing Pine Island, they know they're in Cape Coral, they know where they are, they know where they're going, and it does create a sense of place for the city. And the next steps, as was mentioned. We're already coordinating on the PDNE, so we're waiting on, you know, funding to become available and everything aligned, so the department can start working on that PDNE. But I think those matters are being handled separately. But we are at the final stage of planning, and the next step is the PDNE. So once we get the conclusion of this study, we're going to start working with the city on how we can move forward with the PDNE. And with that, I conclude the presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, and that discussion on, you know, kind of what our vision is for that particular corridor. I'll open it up for any council discussion. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I mentioned at MPO last week that we have fully funded the PDNE now in the new budget, which goes into effect next week. After July 2023, any guesses as to the next steps after that?
So for this project is getting a resolution of support from city council. And then, once the budget is approved for the PDNE, we'll have to program it and work out the details with consulting firms to come and do the project. So that might take, I'll say, a year or so to get all the financials and things started. And will depend on the PDNE group to make those arrangements. So after the budget is approved, we'll have to follow up to what is...
I guess that's where I'm a little confused, because the budget has been...
Right.
Am I missing a step here, or what?
So it's up to the PDNE group, and I can get an answer back to you.
Okay.
Because they are the ones that are going to make the decision when to start, when they can start, and have, and move forward. But I can definitely get that information.
But that process, did you say, could take about a year?
Yeah, that's the high-level estimate. It could be earlier, it could be a little bit longer.
Okay. Priscilla, did you want to add something?
Yes, we're working on a parallel track on the agreement with FDOT, because we have to give them the money. And they're working in the programming of the PDNE. We're working with the local office. So they know us. I think we have the agreement will come before council in October.
We're anticipating this fall.
Yeah.
Fall, okay.
So we're working. And first, we're going to come before you for a resolution of support of the vision plan, so that we set the basis for the PDNE. So the city and FDOT, we are agreeing on the vision and this action plan, and then they're moving to the next step. So then, we have to enter into an agreement with FDOT to give them the check for the PDNE, and then they start with the programming of the actual work.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just to comment on that, we've heard council loud and clear about their appetite in the scheduling for this, and we are working diligently to meet that schedule.
Yeah, and as you heard at the MPO meeting last Thursday, we also got support from the county commissioners and others as well in moving forward with this, because they understand the importance of getting this project done.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you for the presentation, Mr. City Manager. I guess this was mainly for informational purposes only regarding the remainder of the council that may not have been present during CTEC.
Yeah, it's to make sure that everybody was aware. Then, at the bottom of the last slide, it kind of lays out that process. If there was any questions coming out of this, to make sure we got those answered before we just brought forward a resolution.
Okay, all right.
And also for the media to let our residents know where we're at.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to item B3. Coral Oaks Golf Course RFP Results and Recommendation, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the winter retreat in January, city council directed administration to move forward with soliciting proposals to assist in running, managing, or maintaining Coral Oaks Golf Course. That solicitation was put out. We received a number of responses. And this presentation is to give you a summary of those responses that were received, provide management's recommendation, and then to get consensus from council on how to proceed.
Thank you. Good morning again, Mr. Mason.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmember Mark Mason, Financial Service Director. So I'm probably wondering why I'm the one up here talking, right? But I'm up here because it came through as a procurement item from the city manager's office to, through procurement. So I decided to take the lead on this and just do the presentation associated with this. So as the city manager pointed out during the winter retreat, we had a discussion regarding Coral Oaks Golf Course, put out for another RFP. We did. The... Why aren't you working? That's why. So timeline, so we're going to go through several things associated with this. The purpose of this meeting is to talk about timeline, the evaluation, the responses, ranking, recommendation, and the next steps. Timeline, so we, winter retreat, we met, we talked. Consensus was to go back out for the RFP for Coral Oaks Golf Course. We developed the RFP. We put it out on June 8, 2023. Response is due back July 10, 2023. Evaluation came back. We established an evaluation committee. We provided the information to that evaluation committee on September 1. We met on September 11. We scored on September 11. And here we are today with a presentation of the city council regarding the results of the RFP. Couple of things. We've complied with collective bargaining agreement, Article 4, Union 9, whereby we're required to notify the general employee union of the solicitation, which we did, and as well as the fact that we had no response submitted to the RFP from the union. Parks and Recreation Department also elected not to submit a proposal to operate the golf course as well. The people that served on the evaluation committee, myself, Joe Petrella, the Parks and Recreation Director, Matt Grambo, Special Projects Coordinator from the city manager's office, Steve Rao, Park Superintendent, and Nicole Reitler, our Management and Budget Administrator. Four of these have either managed contracts in the past associated with golf courses or have worked at golf courses. And with one specific person who actually served as a superintendent at four different golf courses over 17 years. So I think we have an understanding about either managing contracts or being able to read the contracts or the proposals that came through the system with regard to Coral Oaks. Technical Evaluation Committee, we met. And again, we went through, we discussed the responses, and discussed the grading and the recommendations. And we're here with, to talk about the, what the results of that, those proposals were. I think just a little bit of an explanation on what we put an RFP out for, what we looked for. I think we went with a very broad brush of options to operate Coral Oaks Golf Course. Management, if it's a management agreement, one of the things with a management agreement is generally speaking, there's revenues and expenditures remain with the city. In other words, so they would operate the golf course. All the revenues and expenses would go through their accounting system. On a monthly basis, they would provide us with both the revenues and expenditures. We'd record them in our books. And then, at the end of the year, and during that process, we'd also be paying them a monthly management fee. And at the end of the year, if there are any profits associated with it, usually have a profit sharing agreement associated with the agreement. And it varies depending on contracts, location, et cetera. A licensing agreement is just slightly different with that, with the, where the licensee retains all revenues and expenses. In other words, they're responsible for determining, for making a profit or not. Shares net profit for improvements to the facilities. This, and sets aside a percentage of revenues generally dedicated towards the facility improvements as well. A lease, on the other hand, the LSE then is exclusively responsible for all operations, including management, maintenance, and will retain all revenues and expenditures. And generally speaking, the LSE would turn around and pay us a lease fee for the use of the facilities, and generally shares any profit, whatever that might be. Very similar to what we currently have with Coral Oaks, not Coral Oaks, I'm sorry, Sunsplash, as well as the restaurant down in the Yacht Club. A maintenance-only contract, in this case, we would hire or we would contract for the maintenance of the golf course. The staff at the golf course would manage that particular maintenance contract, but it would be an annual fee. You paid on a monthly basis for whatever the cost of maintaining the grounds is, and you would set standards associated with those, with the maintenance. And other, as far as the responses that we received, we didn't have an other category. However, we had a restaurant management company propose that the restaurant would remain under city control, enter into a P3 operation, and then the applicant would take over all the food and beverage operations only. So that kind of gives you an idea of what it is that we're looking for. It was, again, very broad-brushed approach, and we received responses for all of them. We received one lease proposal. We received one license proposal. We received two management proposals. We received one grounds maintenance proposal. And we received, of course, the one restaurant-only proposal. Overall, the results of the evaluation shows that Trune Golf, and this is specifically for the management-only item, scored the highest and is ranked number one. And Paradigm Golf, which was a lease proposal contract, ranked number two, just behind Trune Golf. If Trune Golf, the licensing agreement, if that were to be, had been ranked, we didn't rank these by the types of agreements that they had proposed, but the licensing agreement would have been behind the Paradigm Golf management contract. So to kind of give you a summary on the monetary portions of the proposals, I mean, please understand that, you know, from an operational standpoint, all of them can operate the golf course. They would come in, they would have their own staff, they would do all of the things necessary to operate the golf course. So it really leaves down, at the end of the day, exactly what proposal and what it is that the city would be looking for. Or, in this case, it really is a monetary summary. So with Paradigm Golf Management on a lease-only basis, they would be looking to funnel in or put $2.5 million over a period of five years into the property for capital repair and improvements to the property. Funding $1 million in year one with an additional $1 million spread over years two and three, and an additional $500,000 during years four and five. And, sorry, during years four and five, they would split fund the $500,000 with $250,000 each. Lease payments to the city would be as follows. They would share 2% of the net revenues for years three and five. So there would be no share, there would be no lease payments in years one and two. 2.5% for years six through 10, and 3% for years 11 through 20. As we read through their proposal, net revenue was not defined. So it's not, I cannot tell you what that means in terms of dollars until you actually negotiate what net revenue means. It means a number of different things. I know what it means to me, but what it means to them and what it means to others may be something different. Trune Golf licensing agreement, sorry, to finish up, they would also commit and utilize 3% of net revenues annually to Coral Oaks Capital Improvement Fund. So annually, whatever that net revenue would be, whatever that number is, 3% would go into a capital improvement fund on an annual basis. For Trune Golf, the licensing agreement, the base license fee to the Capital Reserve Fund. And in all cases, for Trune Golf, the money doesn't come back to us, it goes into a Capital Reserve Fund. So whatever funding that they're talking about, their proposal is, is that all resources with the golf course, in terms of these percentages, would go back into the improvement of the golf course, which would provide improvement to the licensing agreement on an annual basis. So the license agreement shows $50,000 per year for the term of the agreement. And then, and so into the Capital Reserve Fund, whatever the revenues are, between 2.15 and 2.3, 2.4 million dollars. 20% of those gross revenues would go into that. And then, 40% of gross revenues in excess of 2.35 million would go into an improvement fund. Thresholds clearly would increase 1.5% or the CPI, whichever is greater annually. If we looked at CPI for the last couple of years, it would be a very significant increase. I don't think CPI is going to continue that trend into the future, but it could be a significant number. Pay into Capital Reserve Fund, they would use 5% of gross sales and then 5% of gross food and beverages sales. 5% of gross sales is generally on their pro shop and the items that are associated with the pro shop. 90%, or sorry, $90,000 per year into a Capital Reserve Fund for the use of the carts for five years. I can tell you that the carts cost us more than $450,000 that they're talking about for the use of the cart. So we would have to come up with a different methodology and a different program for that. We have the full-service management agreements. The comparison between the two, Bobby Jones Links, $7,500 for a base management fee, or $90,000 annually with a 3% increase annually for five years. And this would be a five-year contract, so they would, and plus a one-time $7,500 transfer, transition fee. It's actually a fairly small number as transition fees go. Incentive fees, they would be looking for a 20% of the aggregate positive improvements in annual net operating income over year over year. And during years three through five of the five-year agreement, they would be looking at a flat 20% of net operating income, whatever that might be. And of course, annually, we would look at net revenues. Again, we'd have to define what net revenues means, but they would utilize 3% of net revenues annually as part of a capital improvement fund. Trune Golf Full Service Agreement is slightly higher. A $10,000 base management fee to Trune Golf and $120,000 annually with a 2.5% increase, or CPI, whichever that might be. 10% of the annual increase of earnings before interest, taxes, depreciation, and amortization would be an incentive fee. Or we would have the option of doing 7.5% of the annual increase in total revenue from your prior year. And total revenue, you know, total revenue would be more based on whatever the annual, whatever the golf fee is. And so if we were to enter into this contract, we would have to define... And so we, if we were to enter into this contract, we would have to define then exactly what we're talking about, the ability to increase fees, et cetera, to determine what that number would be. Reimbursed for actual travel expenses up to $6,000 annually. One of the reasons why this is here is they fly in, they, people come in from all over the country to, as part of the management of the golf course, they bring in regional agronomists to come in and make sure that the superintendents are maintaining the golf course well and correctly, they also bring in management, upper management to, to check on the, on the health of the golf course and to meet with staff and et cetera, but that's usually what that travel expense and reimbursement means. DTE Golf, or the Grounds Maintenance Agreement Proposal, they proposed $825,000 over, for one year. And Spot Restaurant, although there were no monetary terms included in the proposal, their proposal was a, a P3 proposal, so this would actually spark us needing to do something else if we elected to go in that direction. And so as the evaluation committee, since we had an evaluation committee, we felt obliged to give you a recommendation, although it probably wasn't necessary, it, we just simply felt obliged to give you one. So our recommendation from the, from the five people that did the evaluation and their experience associated with golf courses, we recommended a full service management agreement with Troon Golf. The results of that summary on the 88 out of 20, 88.2 out of possible 100 points, we would look at a five-year initial term with two additional five-year extensions upon mutual agreement. They would operate pursuant to an annual budget, which they would develop, we would approve. Marketing and operations plan agreed to and approved by the city is what there are certain things that go into operating and, and the, sorry, the marketing, the operations of the, of the golf course. We will employ, or they will employ all staff at Coral Oaks, in other words, they would hire all the staffing necessary to operate the golf course. Monthly management fee, again, would be $10,000 a month, $120,000 a year, increasable each year on, at 2.5% of the CPI, whichever is, is greater. Again, I think all of these are negotiable and we would look into that. Reimbursement up to $6,000 for travel expenses and incentive fee of 10% or 7.5% annual increase in total revenue, whichever the city prefers, we would have to evaluate that and it would also be subject to whatever the terms are we would agree to in the contract. And so, next steps, city council determines by consensus, either to accept our recommendation or go in a different direction, determine not to move forward with any of the proposals as an option, or explore a proposed public-private partnership for restaurant services only if you elected to do so. If the city council determines to outsource the management of the golf course, then by any of the methods, then city manager is committed to replace all the full-time employees in equivalent roles in the organization. And there are 14 full-time positions at the golf course today, so we would look to absorb all of them into the organization if you elect to move forward without sourcing the golf course. And we're here for any questions and discussion you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. I'll now open up the floor for any council discussion. Councilmember Hayden.
Thanks, Mark, for the presentation. Obviously, this particular amenity is something very important to me, not only because I've played golf, studied golf, studied the history of this particular golf course, who designed it and the people that have continued to, to play out there. A couple of years ago, when all this started, you know, I saw what was happening in there, that it needed a new irrigation system, it's the original irrigation system for the golf course. It needs, it needs a complete green rebuild if you're gonna, if you're gonna do that. We had talked in previous meetings that we not only wanted to make it a destination golf court, destination place for golfers, but for other events, and our clubhouse isn't currently big enough to do that, to do that with, with the restaurant. At the time, earlier, when we decided to put this out at RFP, I was for keeping, for just privatizing the maintenance of the golf course. Since, since that time, we experienced a hurricane that kept that golf course closed for months as we worked with the same debris cleanup company that was doing all of the city. And I watched Palmetto Pine open within a, within a few weeks. I watched, there were some financial issues with the golf course that had to be resolved through, through an audit. We were still dealing with the same capital problems that we had, that we had before that. I noticed a deterioration in the maintenance of the golf course because we couldn't keep a green superintendent because we couldn't pay them what other golf courses were paying them and we were losing them right and left. We couldn't keep an agronomist on staff, which is what you really need. I started to shift my position that maybe we weren't the right people to manage this golf course. I've seen the work that Troon has done at other golf courses, including Burnstorm Arena, and how they've revived that particular golf course. And although we did have record revenue this year at golf courses, at the golf course, which is great, something I wanted to see, but most golf courses around the country have had record years, not only because of COVID and people wanting to get out, but because participation levels are higher than they've ever been for beginning, beginning golfers and junior golf course. I would like, I would like to see that continue. And I think the best way for us to continue down that path is to go with an outside management company, but nothing's changed from what I said earlier, that anybody that has, should we go this way, should anybody that has a job from this city at that golf course will continue to have a job without a reduction in pay. I've talked to the city manager that any, any management agreement would have to include the junior golf program continuing at Coral Oaks, it's one of the most popular in the state, it attracts 250 kids every year, I believe our city manager even went through the program when he was just a couple of years younger than he is now. And so it's something that children look forward to and it's been a valuable asset for our community. I believe the city championship should continue out there, it's a big event for our community. I believe participation in that tournament has been over 200 players for every year that, that I can remember. So there's certain caveats with this, any sort of management agreement for me. In the future, I think it still keeps us in control of looking at, when we do get water and sewer out there, of expanding or building a new clubhouse and allowing other people to utilize a tremendous facility for weddings or for other events. I think it keeps us in a position to look at building a new irrigation system, I don't believe the amount of revenue that would go in from the, from the other agreements would even come close to being able to fund a new irrigation system, which is over $1 million and complete re, green rebuild, which would be much more than that. We know those are the types of things that are going to be coming up, but I think having the right management team in place, having the right agronomist. My only concern with all this is we have one of the best golf pros in the state, I believe, finding a place for him in such a specialized field as a golf pro would be, would be difficult. I, you know, I don't know the management style of Troon, I don't know the golf pro's plans, should something happen, if they would even consider keeping him on as, as a golf pro. Should we, should we go in that direction? I know we're not, we're not there yet, but those are, those are my thoughts. As we've seen with Sunsplash, we weren't in a good place to be managing a water park. We've since found out that we've seen upgrades out there and increased participation as they're, in there as well. It's tough for any municipality to run a golf course, I think, we've seen that shrink over the years, even though our neighbors across the river run two of them. But, you know, I think for our future and as an amenity, a great amenity for our community as we see growth in the next big part of our city in the north, more people are going to want to utilize that facility and I believe this particular company puts us in the best position to, to move forward with our, with our growth and the recreational value of that, of that park. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Real quickly for me, you know, I guess I've always advocated to be able to provide the best amenity to the community at the cheapest price that we can do that at. Also recognizing that, in my opinion, you know, our city, we're not in the Sunsplash business, or we shouldn't be in the Sunsplash business and we shouldn't be in the golf business. There are other organizations or firms out there that have that expertise. You know, you look at a diversified council that we have sitting here today, I have my expertise, I wouldn't want to do what you're doing because that's, that's not what my expertise or experience is. And I think it's very similar to this, you know, as, as far as the local government, we are good at what we do as a local government, providing, you know, public safety and the needs of the community. I think we could do a better job providing a better amenity to the community, very similar to a program like we did with Sunsplash. You know, we took a program there that we provided subsidies each and every year just to keep it net neutral, you know, to keep it above board. And we were doing the same, and we have been doing the same with the golf course, I think it was Councilmember Cosden that asked for some background information on revenues and expenses, thank you for asking for that. And when you take a look at those dollars, again, you know, we're losing money. And I think that's because that's not our expertise. To give it to another entity that, that's what they do, that's what they're experiencing, very similar to Sunsplash, you know, we, we took a loss and, you know, we got a, a check the very first year for over $350,000. Normally, we were paying more than that just to keep it afloat. You know, so for me, it's a no-brainer, it's economics. I think it's a way we can provide a better amenity to the community, but as Councilmember Hayden had mentioned, making sure we take care of the employees there and we find a spot for them, make sure that there's no loss in income is very important to me as well. I think we've done that and discussions, speaking with our city manager, you know, there's a plan for that if we decide to move in this direction, because at no time should they have to sacrifice any pay for a different direction that we may decide to go in. You know, so I think that's very important. To me, this is a no-brainer, I'll support it, I'll support staff's recommendation with the caveat that we take care of the employees that are there and we make sure we find a new home for them. So that's, that's my position on it. Councilmember Cummings.
Yeah, so the question I had to ask is kind of like hitting a little bit of what you're talking about, Mayor, was the lease versus the recommendation from the city. If I understand correctly, though, the lease is what Sunsplash has, correct? Okay, so if Sunsplash has had great success and I believe the, out, nearing the yacht club, the restaurant, the boat, the boat club, what's restaurant called out there? Boat House, thank you, the Boat House, they've had good success as well, and that's a lease. The question I had to ask you, I was seeing how you guys put the lease up there, basically stating you would go one, two years without no percentages coming in, but yet Sunsplash, the first year, they brought in a paycheck for the city. So let's say we talked about the lease and that's an option, why would we wait till the third year? Why wouldn't we kind of, kind of do the same formula that we did with Sunsplash, knowing it worked?
Okay, this is their proposal, this isn't our proposal to them, this is their proposal that they submitted to us. We evaluated each proposal based upon the merits of the proposal.
Okay.
And made a recommendation based upon our, our professional experience in dealing with and, and managing golf courses. So that's, that's where we're at today. If, if the city council elects to go in the direction of the lease or a license or whatever the council elects to do, we, all of them are supportable because all of them will, will work. So it, but we haven't negotiated a lease agreement with them, so we haven't sat down and said, well, you know, we don't like the idea of receiving nothing in two years, for the first two years, so let's see if we can't negotiate something different. Of course, their, you know, whatever they come back with might be something completely different than their original proposal in order to achieve that goal, so we don't know what that is.
Right, well, that, that was my question.
We haven't negotiated anything here.
For the ones that are watching that don't know.
Correct.
That's why I'm asking certain questions. So those are the questions I have for right now, is the, the one that was proposed and in Sunsplash, what we already are using now.
Okay. Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mark. Maybe it's too soon in the process, but I feel like at this point, when we were talking about Sunsplash, we were looking at the financial impact on the city, and that's why I asked for the information yesterday or Monday for the expenses and revenues, but why aren't we talking about that, the impact on the city? Why isn't that part of this information?
The impact on the city is, is, okay, so...
For example, not paying a subsidy anymore or making a certain expected amount back?
All good points. As part of the management agreement, again, we would be looking at the revenues and expenditures staying with the city. If a outside management company came in here and managed to decrease the overall cost of, of expenses while enhancing the cost of revenues, we'd actually start seeing a profit, then today, we don't really see that and haven't seen one in several, in several years. If we go back a couple of years, you know, we were, the golf course was paying back to the city, the, you know, the cost of the, it was an allocation of cost because we were doing services on behalf of the golf course. 2023, we put the golf course inside the general fund, so that actually doesn't occur anymore, you don't see it anymore, but nevertheless, you, we still have the same issue. The, you know, we're still providing that, that service, but it's simply not being charged back to the golf course because the revenues now reside within the general fund and support the overall cost of the general fund. Does that make any sense?
It does make sense, but the point is that we're still spending money.
We are.
Yeah, okay.
And, and under a management agreement, they, that could still very well happen, but with a management agreement, there's, the amenity still remains an amenity of, of the city and it still provides us an opportunity to invest into the, into the golf course and invest into the, the services that the golf course would likely be providing in the future.
So on that note, this isn't the same as Sunsplash on that note, in that the capital expenditures would be ours and not theirs, right? So like the, someone talked about the sprinklers and the clubhouse improvements, those would be our improvements to make.
Under a management agreement, they would. Under a lease agreement, they would, based upon Paradigm's proposal, they would put $2.5 million into the golf course over five years. Some of that may be into green, green remodeling, some of it may be into the irrigation. We haven't sat down and talked to them about where the money would go to, but, you know, the, we, we have done some background work with them and we expect that they will spend quite a bit of money in improving the driving range and enhance the revenues that will be coming in from the driving range because of that.
Okay. My big concern has been since the beginning about the employees there. If, if we can place them and there's no loss of job, no loss of income... If we can place them and there's no loss of job, no loss of income, and people are doing productive jobs, not just stuck somewhere else, then I think I can be okay with this. My goal in the end would be for the golf course to be self-sufficient and with no subsidy. And I know we don't have a subsidy now technically, but we still do. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quickly, Mr. Mason, since I don't see any other lights on. If you take a look at the program that we have or the agreement with Sunsplash, if we want to compare that to the golf course and have a similar program or agreement, which one of these agreements would be more closely towards that?
It would be number one, the Paradigm agreement with, which is lease only.
Versus the recommendation that the staff provide?
Recommendation is a management agreement whereby the revenues and expenditures and the, would be ours, would be our, would be, they would belong to us and we would make the determination of how much effort and how much investment we want to make into the golf course to make it into the premier golf course or the terms that Councilmember Hayden used with regard to that amenity for the city.
Okay.
Management of golf courses is generally the direction most taken throughout the country when it comes to owners of golf courses and having somebody come in there and manage them on their behalf. An example of that would be Palmetto Pines. They hired in, I think it is true, might be somebody else, but they hired in somebody to actually manage the, that for them. Royalty, I don't think it's called Royalty anymore, but Royalty also, I believe, hired Trune to come in there, manage their golf course. And they've been involved in renovating that golf course as well over the past year. The, there are others throughout the county that are also managed by a number of different golf course entities that manage golf courses. In general, many of the municipal golf courses are not managed internally or staffed by city employees to manage golf courses. But they are usually either outsourced through a management agreement or in some cases through a licensing agreement. As an example, Dubbs Dreb up in Orlando is licensed out to, I think it's Trune Golf now. It used to be Billy Casper Golf. And the reason for that is, is the restaurant was separate and distinct from the golf course, so they didn't have that portion of the operation, but they licensed out the actual golf course itself. That just kind of gives you an example of what's happening throughout the country and throughout the state of Florida.
Okay, Councilmember Long?
Yeah, if I understand correctly, the management agreement versus the lease that some of us up here are questioning, it's almost flipped in a sense, right? So we're, it's our asset, we're obligated for the asset, the expenditures, et cetera, the capital outlays, and we are the ones that are sharing the profits at the end of the day, rather than leasing the farm, basically, and then getting a profit share on the back end.
Correct.
Just to kind of encapsulate what the difference is here.
That is absolutely...
I support the management agreement. I know Councilmember Hayden hit a lot of the main points, and then yourself, Mark. I think Trune, it's a national product for anybody that golfs. They know Trune well. Even on the local scene, they are involved in managing several courses, what they've done up the road from me at Burnt Store, is nothing short of phenomenal. I mean, if you're a golfer, you know that the product two, three years ago versus when Trune came in is night and day. And so locally, they do Heritage Landing, Babcock National, I believe, a lot of Colonial Country Club. It's a national product. It's a great product. I don't have any concerns with them coming in and doing a great job. And, you know, for that reason, I'd be happy to support staff's recommendation or the recommendation of their committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, I don't have any other lights on, so would you like us to go down the line like we've done in the past and help you get the direction you're looking for? Yes, please. All right, let's start on Councilmember Long's end this time.
Yeah, I would support the recommendation to move forward with the Trune management, conditioned on ensuring that the staff that we've got there is taken care of and provided for alternate opportunities at a minimum even level as far as salary.
I'm in favor with your recommendation as well. I also have an open mind, too, if someone wants to discuss the lease, I have the open mind with that, too.
I, we've opened this can of worms every single year I've been sitting on this council, so at some point, I don't think my decision has changed. I think we're okay where we're at with the golf course, so, you know, we decided to put money into it. We're making it better. I think we need to stay the course we've been staying and not try to fix something that's not broken. You know, the Sunsplash is broken. I don't think, I don't think we're at that point with the golf course that we need to make this kind of drastic move, but sort of me, I would just continue to do what we're doing out there. Thank you.
Support Trune management with the, but with the other caveats that I had given earlier with staff and the other proposals, so thank you.
Yeah, my staff's recommendation with Trune Golf and allow the city manager to begin negotiations with them, and then I'm sure that that'll eventually come back to council for approval. But, you know, just like I stated before, I support staff's recommendation. Staff's recommendation. Give you the direction you're looking for, Mr. City Manager?
I do, and just so the council's aware, I've had an opportunity late yesterday, which happened to be 7:30 in the morning for Councilmember Steiki, I have an opportunity to discuss this with him. And it doesn't change, his position doesn't change the direction given this morning. So we have direction. We will commence contract negotiations and then I'll discuss with you all if you want to have a cow before the formal meeting on exactly what's in the contract.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. Once you negotiate that contract, bring it back to a cow, we can have further discussion on that and then move forward from there.
Just to make sure, that it would likely take about three months before there's an actual switchover. So once we agree to a contract, it'll still take several months before the actual change occurs.
My understanding, your goal, I know, Mr. City Manager, in our discussions, I thought was January 1st. Is that still the goal?
That's what was advertised in the RFP. So depending on how long it takes us to get to a formalized agreement, there may be a little bit of slippage in there. I think that's what Mark's saying.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thanks. All right, is there any other roundtables discussion, either by council? We'll start with council first. Councilmember Cummings?
Yes, hi. We recently just saw in the paper last Friday, someone had asked about being heard. Basically, let me go over this so we have a better understanding. The author pretty much petitioned to have a timeframe for us to discuss single district voting. And I saw that in the paper. And my question was, do you have a timeframe that you would like to discuss that to maybe move forward, to maybe hear what we all have to say about it?
Yeah, that was, are you talking about the petition to council? Yeah, the petition to council, I know that next year is election year. And I had the intent by the, about the first of the year for the council to have a discussion on any items that they felt, not only to the two items that Mr. Bashaw had brought up, but any items involving the charter. Knowing it's an election year, we could put something on the ballot. There's some time restrictions on when we would have to submit those. But in the response that I gave Mr. Bashaw, it was basically, thank you for the inquiry and the request, but I thought it was something that council as a whole, I should have that discussion. And I was planning on bringing that back the first, by the first of the year, to start having those discussions, knowing next year is the election year. And it wasn't just to those two specific topics that he had requested. It would be a more broader approach of our city charter as a whole.
Yeah. So the other question I have to ask you is, Alex, maybe you can help me. Our city attorney in the charter, under council rules of order, anytime that someone sends something in and has questions, as we are as a whole, a lot of us don't receive that. It goes, I believe, directly to you, correct?
The petitions do.
Yeah, the petitions come to you.
They actually go to the staff first. We have a process that we've utilized for many years that goes to staff first, they make a recommendation, then it comes to the mayor's office. And that's how it's been for many years, as long as I've been here.
Okay. So my question is, when it comes to staff and then it comes to the mayor's office, there are some things that have come through that we may have not have seen that could have been very important to us to talk about. So the question I have to ask you is, how can we get it to where, when a petition comes forward, we can all see it individually?
To accomplish that, we would just make a, if that is what the whole body wants to do, there'd be an amendment to your rules under Sub B where it says that instead of it going to the mayor's office, it would go to the mayor and council member's office. And that would be the slight tweak, in which case then you would all then be obligated to receive it under your rules.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be fair game. I mean, how do you guys feel about that?
I'll open it up for council to have that discussion. Councilmember Welsh?
Well, as you know, my favorite constituent has been asking for petitions to council from me for quite a while. And he's actually asked for three different ones, I believe, from the mayor. And there is an opportunity, I believe, in our reports where a council member can ask for a petition. So if I thought that that resident had a petition that I felt that this whole body needed to vote on, I believe during our reports, I can bring up a vote to have that petition. Am I wrong, Alex?
You can.
And then as a council, we can decide to give them that 10-minute petition.
At every regular agenda meeting, each individual council member can in fact bring it up and then move it forward at that regard. This is a, the only provision we're really dealing with is it's really based on notification. That's really what it's about. It's a notice to the council as a whole. In regards to what you're able to do, you're able to bring that up. All of you are able to bring that up independently as part of your reports.
Yeah, so as far as getting every single petition that comes in, I think, you know, the mayor has done a pretty good job with that and staff. And if there is a particular resident of that district that wants to bring it forward, they could talk to their representative and explain that it was either denied and go further with that. But to get all that information each time, I'm not looking to make a change in the rules. I think there's plenty of ways to have it done. And even when we saw the one for Mr. Bashaw come through, we did all receive that information later on, or he had the opportunity himself to petition each council member about it. So I'm not in favor of supporting a change at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you. I'm going to put you on the spot, Mayor. How many of these petitions have come to you in like the past year?
Since I've been mayor, I think this was the fifth, fourth or fifth one. Lou Nevere was either two or three. And then I've had the one probably about two months ago at most, was the Gilbane Project when they were talking about, go ahead.
And the historical?
Yeah, the historical. And then this one. So it's been five or six, actually, since I've been mayor. And like I said, I know the procedure that we've been following, and we do have a procedure. You can ask for that from our staff. There's a procedure that we follow that, as long as I've been here, we've been following that particular procedure.
Well, I'm good with the procedure. I think there's been one time since I've been on council that we have done it, how two council members agreed, or I don't know, the majority of council. Do you remember this? I don't even remember what the topic was. It was several years ago, and we got something on the agenda that way. But I think it's literally only happened once. But we are all free to do that if we want to. We can bring it up and ask, and it works if the majority agree. So I don't think we need to change the process as it is now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open for, you know, whatever this council feels comfortable with. If this council wants me to forward the petition, so you're aware of it, I'm more than happy to do that. If you're okay with the way the process is now. You know, more than likely, anytime a particular individual's providing a petition to council, I'm going to guess that at least one other of us, besides myself, is probably already aware of that. You know, I know Mr. Nevere has been meeting with you many times, asking for that petition to council. So I knew you were aware of it. And I know, you know, there's other circumstances where one of us, besides myself, is probably aware. And like our city attorney said, at any given time, we can have that discussion. We make all of our decisions collectively. If I make a decision that this council doesn't agree with as a majority, we can bring that back. And as we all know, and I've always advocated, we rule by the majority, and I'm okay with that, whether I'm on the winning side or the losing side. So I think the process that we've had has been working for many years before I got here. And I think we all have that opportunity, you know, to bring those up, those discussions up at any time. And you take, you know, Mr. Bashaw's petition or anyone's petition, if it's denied, and we've seen it happen here before, you know, there can be a response that has been formalized before as far as a citizen's input. And if it's a 12-minute presentation or a response, I can talk for three minutes and pass it to the next person to speak for three minutes, pass it to the next person. So really, if you really think about it, there's an hour restriction on citizens' input. Any particular person or any organization or a group of people could come and pass that, and they've done it. I've seen it. I'm sure you have. So there's no real restriction, other than maybe one person couldn't have more than three minutes unless it is a petition. So I think the message can still get across to us. It just may have to be done in a different way, and that has happened before. Councilmember Shepard?
Yeah, I have nothing against all of us being notified. It just adds a level of transparency, not saying that besides the mayor, one of us would also know whatever situation it is, but what can it hurt to just notify everybody? It's just another layer of transparency. I don't see anything negative on the way we do it now, but I don't see a negative to adding other council members to being notified as well. I don't see that problem either, if it's just changing a line. That's my feelings.
Councilmember Cosden?
I believe we are all notified. I think it's just that we're not notified ahead of time. We're notified after when it's denied, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I sent the notice out and I made sure it was copied to everyone.
So we do know, we just don't hear ahead of time. But, okay, if we're not making the decision, if you're still making the decision, then it doesn't matter to me what it says ahead of time. It only matters after your decision.
Yeah, and full transparency, I directed Connie, you know, to send my letter out to all of council. So you were aware. So to me, you have the opportunity, if you don't agree, the next meeting, you can bring it up and you could have that discussion and collectively as a body and a majority, if you want to go in a different direction than I decided, I've given you the opportunity. I've given you a copy of the response. You have that available to you, like our city attorney said, to bring it up at the next meeting. And if this body wants to go a different direction than my position on it, that you have that opportunity to do that. So I think, I think the means are there. Now, if I didn't give you the response or I didn't provide you a copy of it, then you probably wouldn't know about the petition. But I feel anytime that I write a letter on behalf of the city and I sign my name as mayor, you will know. But I feel anytime that I write a letter on behalf of the city and I sign my name as mayor, you will know. And that has always been my practice, whether it's a petition, sending a letter to any other organization, elected official. If it's on behalf of the city, you will know exactly what that letter is and you'll have a copy of it.
But it doesn't hurt to change it. There's not a negative to give.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to be ahead of time, you know, to me, if I'm still making the decision, you know, I'm still going to make the decision. You know, if you're notified once, I make the decision and you don't agree or this body wants to go in a different direction, after I've made that decision, I think you have that available to you. Not only with this petition, but any other petition. So, you know, like I said, if I wasn't providing that information and you never knew it even came across to my desk, I could understand the argument. But that's not the case. I provided you with a copy of the letter of the denial. And it wasn't really a denial. It was just not now. You know, I think we'll have that discussion here several months, not only on those particular topics, but the charter as a general, to see if this body has a direction that they want to go to as far as a referendum in a future ballot. So for me, I think that the process is working. Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah. So kind of like Councilman Shepherd was saying, it's just transparency and it's not trying to start anything here. But just for me, if someone's sending a petition in, I like to see kind of what they're petitioning. It only takes a few more minutes to read something. And, you know, with city manager going through everything, he's passing out four or five in the last year. I mean, I just think that four or five of them is not a lot. So we can actually hear what people have to say, because after all, all of us were voted in by the residents of Cape Coral. And I know I would like to know what they're saying immediately, so I can have a chance to look into it. But I do have a question for our city manager. So have you ever sent anything in as well for all of us to look at that was denied and turned back into your lap?
As far as the petition goes?
Yeah, like something that may be beneficial or an idea that could maybe help.
No.
Project or?
I'll touch on what the discussion that we had. So one thing that city administration's office has always been mindful of is in the rules, the agenda is proffered to the mayor's office as the chief parliamentarian to approve the agenda.
Right.
Not under Mayor Gunter, but in my previous role as the assistant city manager, we had a mayor who was vetoing an item routinely from the agenda. And we ultimately had to work out the issue there. But I've not experienced that under Mayor Gunter. But it is an opportunity for the mayor's seat to control the agenda, and we've worked with it. If, I can assure you all, if we were trying to put something on the agenda and the mayor was routinely striking it off the agenda, as was just discussed, I would bring that before the board, most likely in a one-on-one, to see if we can, you understand the situation, and then if need be, send a memo. I would have to do the same thing. But as far as, I did have my light on, because I did want to, just in the spirit of transparency, Mr. Mayor, when you send your letter out with your response, do you also supply the city manager's office response? Or should I make that available to everybody? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, if they don't get my response, then there might be a gap that they're missing. So that was why my light was on.
Yeah, I mean, are you talking about for your response?
The petition part, yeah.
I mean, I have no problem with that, if you want to provide that to all of council. Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm asking as part of your process, when you sent out, you know, your up or down, did you also include our response?
Yes, yeah, it goes to this.
If you're doing that, then it's...
I always, I forwarded all of city council into your office as well, because really, you kind of start the, your office starts the process.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure, as you send that out, to make sure our response is included. This way you have the background of either why we can resolve it or why we can't.
And I will tell you that, you know, since I've been mayor, I've never taken anything off the agenda. Anytime staff provides the agenda, I approve it. From time to time, I have added items onto the agenda. And I have added items at the request of council members. So anytime that any particular council member asks for an item to be added, I've always added that particular item, because if it's important to you, it's important to me. And I've always done that. And I've had those requests a few times, where council members wanted to talk about item X or item Z or whatever it was, and I've always added it. And I'll continue to always do that. So, you know, again, we're a collective body. We are a city manager, a form of government, and we'll move forward in that fashion. And so I think what we need to do is kind of go down the line here to make it simple. Are we okay with the existing way that we're doing things? Or do we want to make a change and see where the majority lies? And then we'll go from there.
Basically, would it just be like adding, like it would be a...
It can be any change that you may...
Just include council. It would just be simple, correct?
Right.
City attorney. I mean, it's not difficult. This is not difficult, right?
It would be just adding mayor and city council member's office. So that's the slight change. If there's a consensus on that, then I could certainly bring that back for formal approval. I just, I haven't heard from a couple of you, so I really don't know where everyone lies.
Right. Well, we'll know that here going down the list.
I have total respect for what you said, Mayor, that we've never had that situation with you. But what Mike has just mentioned is that it's happened with other mayors where they vetoed things and...
He's talking about the agenda.
Yeah. So...
I think we're talking about petitions. So there are apples and oranges.
Yeah, there are two different provisions within your rules.
Got you, got you, got you.
For whatever reason, there was a delineation where petitions are treated differently. I don't know why.
I'm just saying that if there's a possibility of improving something, doesn't mean that anything now is being done wrong. I'm saying if we see a glitch, that we want to make an improvement for even future mayors. That's what I'm putting up there.
Okay. Councilmember Cosden, we'll start with you.
Just to be clear, because I don't have it in front of me, the power still lies with the mayor to decide, right? So this is just us getting a document.
It would be just you receiving it, you would be receiving it with the mayor. They would be required to submit it to all council members, including the mayor.
I see no need for that, so I don't know.
I'm for receiving it. I don't see it hurting anything.
I'm good with the way the process is now.
Yeah, I'm good with the way it is.
Keep it the same.
Receiving it.
The same is fine with me.
Okay. All right. We'll continue in the fashion that we have been doing for many years. All right. Any other roundtable discussion by council? Okay, seeing none, Mr. City Manager, you got anything?
I have none. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We will move on to time and place of future meetings. We have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, October 4th, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, meeting adjourned.